Welcome, everybody, to the December 17, 2015 zoning board at appeals meeting, also known as the holiday edition of the ZBA.
Thanks for your attendance.
That's right. And first of all, I think everybody in the room has gotten a cookie, but those of you that did not show tonight, we have Christmas cookies and there's still time, so hurry on down. I also have one other thing that I want to take care of before we start a meeting. I have a special recognition to somebody. Those of you that are in the room, I know, recognize that this is an all-volunteer board. But one member of the board, I think, deserves special recognition this year because he's had perfect attendance, which I don't know has ever happened, but...
Really?
Yes, yes. So it's, I think it's just to tell you, it's Frank sitting here, Frank Ledge. He's an attorney and he practices in Boston and lots of times, he's always busy and sometimes he's out of town, but he has made it to every single year, I mean, every single meeting this year, so congratulations and thank you. I know the people of the town thank you. And in honor of your perfect attendance, I bought you a beach house.
Oh, you're so sweet.
There it is. That is indeed beach house. And for those of you who are wondering...
I know an empty lot.
You can do that, but no town funds were expended in the presentation of cookies and/or beach houses. So with that, thank you Frank, I think that's, I really think that's worth something. That is.
Does that mean you have some time off coming?
This is what's going to happen, I'm going to make sure I miss a meeting.
No, that's great. Nobody else has done that, so, and that's not to diminish any of our presence, but I just think it is special that Frank, it's just special Frank. So anyway, so with that, we'll proceed with the meeting. You want to call our first application?
First application, Jamie Herler and who?
Hurley.
Hurley and Alicia of Fort Jericho Lane in Situate, request a Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, special permit or finding to construct in addition to their pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling at Fort Jericho Lane in Situate.
Okay. Hello?
Good evening. For the record, Gregory Morse, Registered Engineer, Morse Engineering, representing the property owners Jamie Herlehey and Alicia Spreden. The property is Fort Jericho Lane. We're here seeking special permit, Section 6 finding, in accordance with Section 810.2 of the bylaw, to permit two additions to their residence. The plan, as you can see, their lot is highlighted here, consists of 17,094 square feet. It is entirely upland area. It's located in R3 zoning district. Jericho Lane is at the bottom of the plan. It's surrounded by developed residential properties on all sides. The existing dwelling was constructed circa 1850, per the assessor's map. The dwelling itself is non-conforming with respect to the front yard setback. The front yard is a nine-foot setback as it exists. Along Jericho Lane, if you do the average front yard setback, the average along the street is 18.9 feet. The bylaw requires 30. The proposed additions I've highlighted in green on this plan, one of them is off the back of the structure, is a single-story addition. The one on the eastern side or the right side of the house is a two-story addition. The proposed addition on the right side there is at a distance of 11 feet off of the front lot line. The floor areas, the existing floor area is 1,446 square feet. With the additions, that puts the house at 2,593 square feet, representing a 79 percent increase. The 2,593 square feet, we didn't think was, we thought it was in keeping with other houses in the neighborhood, specifically the district in the harbor along Jericho Road and Jericho Lane. It's setback further than the existing, nine feet to the front yard, and we're here speaking a special permit.
I hope you're not choking on that cookie, Neil.
I sneeze.
Okay, God bless you.
The muffled sneezes.
Okay. Did I have any question? The question I had, and it's really, I guess, a question for you, Neil, when we, I know when we do raise and reconstructs, we have the, we have the percentage of increase on the, on the plot line. Do we need that in a situation like that, you think, in this?
It's not as critical because...
It's not critical?
Not as critical because on the raise and reconstruct, you know, it's kind of open-ended if you don't find out. This way, it's shown on the plan. I guess the question I, are they two-story additions?
I think the right side one is two-story addition, and the back is one-story.
Yeah, so we submitted a set of the architecturals. You're correct. The addition on the right is two stories, the addition on the back is one. On the plan, I do net the, I do list the floor areas that are proposed, not the ratio of the floor areas.
But that's, that's with all the additions, all three of them, so...
Yeah, it's a very modest-looking addition.
Yeah, and it looks like it's very nice.
I could certainly ask the question, but...
Yeah, it is certainly kind of, you know, although, there's not much, although there's room in the back, the ground slopes nearly 11 feet from the kind of high point of the backyard there, so you kind of really have to change the topography to put an addition on back there as well, so it's probably why you kind of kept things towards the front, I would imagine, and closer to the back. No, kind of just a statement.
Are you the Herleheys?
No, I'm with you.
Oh, okay. Well, welcome, come, come sit with your representative there, and we have holiday cookies, so please have one. Okay. Do you have any questions or observations, Frank?
My observation is, it looks like it's not an increase in the only non-conformity, but it's probably an intensification of the existing non-conformity. So we need to determine whether it's a substantial detriment or not. That's really been our issue.
I would agree.
I can say.
Yep. Well, and I thought the plans looked nice. I think, you know, it still leaves a lot of room on the lot, even on the, you know, so it would not appear to me to be a substantial detriment for what's already there, so that would be my thought.
And also to, I think Neil's point, the other homes in the neighborhood are bigger...
Some of them are huge.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't think this is, the addition, the size of the addition certainly isn't overpowering for the neighborhood with the other homes that have gone up there too.
Neil, do you have any other comments or concerns or questions?
No, it's, I noticed not in the proposed map floodplain, the floodplain approaches in that area somewhat significantly, so the building also is not in the floodplain.
Okay.
It was for the owner.
Is anybody from the audience, we lost our audience, but anybody who's here wish to comment on this one? Okay. Do we have any motion?
Sure. On the application of Jamie Herlehey and Alicia Spreden for a special permit to construct an addition to the single-family dwelling at Fort Jericho Lane, I move to find that the existing structure is non-conforming with respect to the front setback, that the proposed additional two additions will not increase any non-conformities, but that the two-story addition on the side of the house will intensify the existing front setback non-conformity, and that the board further find that the proposed additions are not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood relative to the existing structure and the rest of the neighborhood, and that therefore a special permit be granted.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who gets to write that one?
Frank for me. We either two and one or one and one.
Been a while, I didn't have any.
Really?
Yeah. It is me.
Okay.
No problem.
Well, help yourself, Sue. Help yourself.
Your cookie?
I break eggs.
You can't talk. Oh, when you eat yummy?
Well, give me a little Santa Claus outfit then.
There you go. Oh, that's what I thought was on this one. Okay. Next application.
Brian and Christine McGowan of Non-Briarwood Lane in Situate, request a special permit finding in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, to add an attached garage to the non-conforming single-family dwelling extending pre-existing front and rear yard non-conforming at 132 Lawson Road in Situate.
Hi, Paul.
For the record, my name is Paul Marabito, Morris Engineering Company, representing the applicant. We currently owns the existing lot at number 132 Lawson Road. The lot area is less than 20,000 square feet. The structure setbacks are pre-existing non-conforming setbacks. The front yard setback is, required is 30 feet, it's 25.5 feet. The rear yard is 27.4 instead of 30 feet. What we're asking the board to do is to grant a special permit or finding to extend the pre-existing non-conformity to allow for the construction of a proposed garage to the right side of the house. Side yard is non-conforming, required zoning by law requirements, but the front yard will be 26.2 to 26.5, which is further back than the existing house, and one corner of the existing, the closing lot will be about three inches shorter than the house at the present time. Other than that, there's no other proposed changes on this one.
Okay.
Paul, you said that was a, is it two-story?
No, the garage...
Yep, the, or just storage above or...
I believe it's one-story.
It's a two-car garage though, right?
Pardon?
One-story, two-car garage?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody build one-car garage anymore?
Story and a half, Paul, is it?
Looks like a single-story house.
He shows a hip roof above it.
Is it, is it storage up, up over?
No.
Ah, sorry, no. It's more than a story.
The roof line between the house and the garage is lower than the house and the garage?
Yeah, I don't think we have a copy of that.
I mean, I think it's, it fits with the house, it's just, I would call that where it exceeds, is it 15, less than 15 feet in height? We call it a story out of the zoning bylaw, if it looks like that and it exceeds 15 feet, which it may not. Of course, the middle of the, or if there's a floor proposed, that also constitutes a story. If they're just doing an open ceiling joist, and it doesn't exceed 15 feet, the way we measure height, it's one story, so. I think if you show them the rendering, maybe.
Yeah, we don't have any, I don't think, do we have plans to just, because we didn't get plans. Do you have plans to submit for us, Paul?
Maybe you just show them the rendering then, no.
Yeah.
I can show you what he, this is what the, I don't know, we draw this, that's what we have. This is the garage, and this is the existing house.
Okay.
And the new roof will be just a bit lower than that and come across, this looks like...
Porch.
Is this the ridge line? Yeah. It doesn't look like he's got a second floor in there.
This is a pretty short house.
He has a height there for it.
It's a really short house. I know, I saw it.
Here's the second floor in the existing house.
Yeah, it doesn't even look like it.
Doesn't look like it.
Brian's mother lives here, and she needs a garage. She's elderly, so if you're going to build a garage, you'll be able to walk into the house.
Okay.
You can keep that if you want.
Yeah, could you just, yeah, give it to Annie, maybe, so she can have it, unless you want to look at it? Or they're building a bathroom in the garage?
Yeah, look, yeah, that's what it looks like, seven feet in.
Taking out part of the, well, usually part of the garage, okay.
Would you just show that to Neil? That doesn't change any of our analysis, I assume. There's a bathroom, they're using part of this space as a bathroom?
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah, okay.
They're going to have some storage above the garage. Consider that now.
I just don't want you, I just don't want you restrict, I mean, if that's what they want, there's no need to...
Yeah, we'd rather grant that now.
To one story.
Right.
Yeah, we'd call that a two-story, if it has a floor above.
Yeah, it looks like they're going to be able to have some storage.
But you're saying it's a one-story.
Story and a half, yeah, I mean, it's a story and a half, or it's actually, by definition, it's two-story. It's the distance between the, any roof and the floor below, that's a story.
So we do call it a two-story garage?
I would call it a two-story.
Okay, two-story garage, okay.
Paul, is it septic or town sewer on the property, huh?
Probably town sewer at this point.
I believe it's a sewer.
Okay, we'd say we don't have to worry about any septic issues with the addition and whatnot, that's why I'm asking.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Neil, any other comments?
No questions.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment? Okay, do we have a motion?
This one, this one increases the non-conformity slightly, right?
Well, no, it doesn't, because it decreases it, because it's 26 and they set it back 26.2.
The rear is about .3.
There's an attachment to cover letter. The, the front of the house, the, sorry, the front of the garage will be further back. Closest part of the house is 25.5 feet. The garage will be back 26.5.
Right.
It's the back setback, yeah, it's three inches closer than...
The rear yard will be three inches closer to the...
Oh, so that's the...
It increases the non-conformity.
Oh, it does.
Because of the angle of the lot.
We're asking, that, that house...
You're right on that.
...is actually parallel to the street, so what we're asking to do is to extend the pre-existing non-conformity.
You just want to keep the line straight.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a...
Right. So it increases the non-conformity.
You're right, you're 100 percent, yeah.
We have to find out whether, determine it doesn't create a substantial detriment on this one as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Right, so on the application of Brian and Christine McGowan for a special permit and finding to add a two-story attached garage to 132 Lawson Road, I move that the board find that the existing structure is non-conforming with respect to both front yard setback and rear yard setback, that the proposed addition will, actually, it intensifies, doesn't increase the non-conformity on the front, but it intensifies the existing non-conformity on the front.
In the rear.
On the front, and that on the rear, it increases slightly by three inches the existing non-conformity, and that the proposed addition does not substantially, is not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood compared to the existing structure and the existing neighborhood, and that therefore the board grant a special permit.
Just one thing we want to add in, the two-story garage and proposed porch, just if you'll...
And porch?
Yes, just to cover that.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is the porch, and this is the, this is inside these here.
So it's going to be all the same foundation, I take it?
Pardon?
Yeah. I have amended, that's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Merry Christmas.
Take a cookie to Barbara, any of those, any of those little kids that are all grown up.
Do you have a...
Huh?
What's in the bag?
Paul, did you...
Paul got a perfect attendance award. Frank got a perfect attendance award.
Hard to believe.
I know.
The first time in my life I got a perfect attendance for anything.
Really? Even in grade school or anything?
Paul, do you still have a copy of that plan?
I'm a sickly child.
Oh, okay.
Do you still have a copy of the building plan?
The what?
The plan, building plan?
Oh, we got it, it's, yeah, he's got it.
Oh, that was my question. So she's got it.
We got his plan.
Thank you.
Who writes this one?
John.
The options are in the air, so...
Yeah.
The options are...
I'll take this one. I still got one more to do.
Oh.
Yeah. I'll do this, I'll do them both.
We're pretty, we're pretty caught up. I was the one who was most behind, who was recently...
Yeah, I've got one, I've got one to do.
Like skinned it by the skin of my teeth. We do have, we do have a new member of the audience. Did you, would you like a Christmas cookie?
No, thank you.
You sure? They're for morning glories, they're really good. They're freshly baked today.
Both, no more.
And if you stick it in your pocket, it'll go home and somebody will find it in the laundry.
Hopefully not, hopefully not the mice.
Okay.
BTZ Realty Trust, Leo Costello trustee of 29 Long Meadow Road in Situate, request a variance to Section 720.7C to allow the applicant to apply to the planning board for a special permit to construct the common driveway in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 10, and Section 950.2C of the Situate zoning bylaw at 29 Long Meadow Road in Situate.
Okay, I have to say, I was a little confused by this one, because...
You weren't alone.
Because I'm going to guess, first of all, you're here because you need a variance, and the ZBA is the one that grants the variance, but we have no control over common driveways. So I don't, I don't know why...
Well, I can explain it, because I was confused when I saw it at first too, and then I figured it out. Our bylaw says you cannot have a common driveway off a cul-de-sac.
Correct.
So in order to access Mr. Costello's land lot, I think, which he plans in dividing or subdividing, he needs to either do a wetland crossing or get a variance and put a common driveway or a access off of, well, it would become a common driveway off the cul-de-sac because it would be, if it's one lot, it, he would have a driveway to the existing property there. If it's two, it would be two common driveways. And I further, you know, I mean, I'll give you my opinion at some point, if you'd like.
Are you ending it there for the moment?
Huh?
You ending it there for the moment?
If you want me to continue, I will.
Well, let's hear, let's hear from the applicant, but I think it is kind of a, I mean, I guess my first question is whether or not we have any power to act in this at all.
The board has the power to grant the variance, but as we all know, and this is a, we're not, we're not granting him the common drive special permit, okay? They would have to go to the planning board for that, that's their jurisdiction. What the board would be granting if they granted the variance would be relief from the prohibition of putting a driveway in the first place off of a cul-de-sac. He wouldn't get to first base with the planning board, because the zoning bylaw says...
You can't do it.
You can't do it.
Right.
So he'd be barred from even, I mean, he could apply, but he'd be shut down. So in order to apply to the planning board, and what's going on here is that, you know, they're in front of conservation, and I think some of the conservation members are here, and they certainly will speak for themselves, but I think they're, they're, I'm going to say, it's my understanding that a, you know, wetland crossing up to a certain square footage with replication, correct me if I'm wrong over there, Pat, is permissible if there's no other way to access, okay? So, so I think really what they're here to determine is if they qualify for variance.
You're exhausting your administrative remedies to get to where you want to get to, kind of, right?
Yes, I'll...
Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'll kind of reestablish everything Neil just said.
Okay.
Again, Greg Morse, representing BTZ Realty Trust, Leo Costello, Audience trustee. We have applied for a variance. Mr. Costello owns a large piece of property, approximately 25 acres in size. This is at the end of Long Meadow Road, Fieldstone Road. I'm graphically depicting it on the plan here. This is, this is Long Meadow Road. The property is highlighted with this bold line, in total, hit of butts, Fieldstone Road at this location, Bittersweet is the cul-de-sac right here. This is the Happily Elementary School. And right now, the property is developed with the Costello single-family residence right here. They have an out barn, they have a horse stall building out back. It's accessed right now from their frontage at the end of the cul-de-sac here on Long Meadow via a driveway up to the house. Basically, what we applied for is, we want to construct two new single-family homes. This is in the R2 zoning district. These homes, I've shown their approximate locations here in yellow, they're in upland area. There were two existing lots that Mr. Costello purchased on Fieldstone Road here that have adequate frontage for development as a single family. We'll be adding additional land area to those lots to accommodate the yards and septic systems association. But he has all the frontage that he needs for development of these two houses. We applied to the Conservation Commission to come in off of the frontage on Long Meadow here with a wetland crossing. What I've shaded here in black on this overall plan is the extent of the wetlands in this area. I have a closer version of this that I can show you that shows our proposed crossing at that location. The regulations with Conservation Commission permit crossings where you have a filling of up to 2,500 square feet to access upland areas of your property. So we fall under that, I think we're proposing 2,000, thereabout, square feet of alteration, but Conservation Commission has asked us to explore other alternatives to avoid the wetland impacts for accessing this lot. We've evaluated essentially three access locations. The one that we proposed to conservation, crossing the wetland, we looked at the frontage that Mr. Costello has at the end of Bittersweet, that would involve a significantly larger wetland crossing. The third access point he has is, is existing frontage at the end of Long Meadow where the cul-de-sac is. That there, if we came in off of that, would have to be a common driveway. As Neil stated, the common driveways are prohibited off the end of a cul-de-sac. You're not the permit-granting authority for a common driveway, planning board is. So we've asked for relief essentially from the provisions of 720 of the bylaw, which prohibit the construction off the end of the cul-de-sac. That would then allow us to apply to the planning board for a common driveway, and they would certainly set the specifications for pavement and curve radiuses and the exact layout of that. You really would be granting us the variance that would allow us to take that next step and avoid the wetland alteration to access these two house lots.
Okay.
And so you need to satisfy 48, Section 10?
Yes. You want to dive into that piece?
Well, first of all, I mean, so on this that you gave us, you've got lots, so you're not building on these lots, you're creating something bigger?
Those two lots there are the, are the frontage that creates the two house lots. We're going to be adding land area to those. We have not added land area to those two lots yet, because we don't know what the final approach to the property... because we don't know what the final approach to the property is going to be.
So you haven't created...
It will be, it will be a form A plan to ultimately create those two lots there.
But this proposal is for 29?
Correct. This proposal is to allow us to...
And these marks go to 30 and 31, right?
So, we'd be asking for the common driveway over the property line of 29, which encompasses right now this entire property.
Oh.
If you look at the assessors map, you see we, we applied at number 29, Long Meadow. It's to access two lots that are currently known as, I think, 30 and 31.
Long Meadow. I feel so.
Well, who owns 32 and 33?
Costello.
Oh, so this is all his property?
Yes.
34?
Lot 34?
34, correct. Yep. 35, 36.
So, so the sort of short story is, the lots are, the, these lots are created, but they're not the, you anticipate creating different lots?
Inliding those.
Changing the lines just to add additional area to those.
Greg, I think part of the problem here is all we have, or all I have at least is this.
Right, right.
Okay.
And you're, you're, you've got another plan there.
Correct. This is the, this is the block plan, the record plan for the property. Get a copy of that to you.
So, this, so this is what we're kind of looking at right now. That's that. This is the... Neil Stone, you keep calling it bittersweet over here.
So you say 29, but 29 includes all of this?
These, 29 on the assessors is all of this land.
Plus...
Okay.
Oh, yeah, 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 all of this.
So if you look at the assessors map...
It's 30 through 1, through 2, through 3.
So, yeah, 29 includes all the way up to these locations. The proposed houses would be somewhere in, in here, thereabouts. We don't know the exact locations yet.
Those, so you're kind of adding uplands to the...
We're adding uplands to lots 30, 30...
Now, on your proposed common driveway, that's all, there are no wetlands crossing?
No wetlands crossing, and the common driveway itself would all be on 29 Long Meadow, the, the property that we filed for.
Gotcha.
By the time it gets to these individual lots, it's split at that point.
Well...
The worst issue really is so much how it runs. It's just whether in concept, we should propose this way to get to the property versus other ways.
Exactly.
And then balance that under the variance statute. Gotcha.
Right, which, which is actually kind of convoluted in law. You know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to kind of get it. So if we just examine, if we examine the variance statute...
Yep.
We have to, we have to determine if, if you... Where's the... It's, well, first of...
On your circumstances...
Page 239.
Right. So, so the issue becomes, yeah, whether or not this is an issue relating to soil condition, shape, or topography, topography. And it, it does, it does, in the research that I said, it, wetlands certainly is considered soil conditions.
Yes.
Okay, so, but, that's not enough. The next one, the next thing we, we have to say, the circumstance must not affect generally the zoning district in which it is located. So, I guess the next question is, other than you, those lots there, are there, are there wetlands anywhere in this, these areas?
So, you hit the nail on the head. We're, we're coming in under the soil conditions with wetland soils being our unique characteristic here. We're saying it's unique on this property because the wetlands don't extend on the whole property. They only cover the frontage portion, and they're not taking away the ability to make the remainder of the property buildable. Wetlands throughout, and, wetlands throughout the district, you know, exist and have septic requirements to them. Typically, they're not up along the street frontage with significant upland behind them. So that's what we're claiming is our unique condition here.
Would you mind if we ask our ConCon?
Absolutely.
Pat, you want to speak to this issue?
Sure. Pat Gallivan, Conservation and Natural Resource Officer. As Neil and Greg both pointed out, you know, Conservation can, they are allowed to fill up to a certain amount of wetland. But we're also required under the Wetland Protection Act to see if the property owner has another way in that doesn't involve the fill. So we're required to do that by DEP. So, when we saw a possibility of, you know, coming in off the cul-de-sac, we said, you know, you should explore this possibility. And the uniqueness of the soils, it is a, you know, it's a hydric soil. So that was what he had been looking at too, so.
With respect to, are there, I mean, are there other wetlands in this area? Or is this like a totally dry, whole area? I'm not just talking about this property, because I don't think that matters...
Right.
...in our analysis. But is this like an island of wetlands where there are no other wetlands in this area?
Boy, that's, I mean, there are some neighborhoods around this where there's some development, and then there are some other wet areas off of Havilly and down that way. So it's, it's hard to...
Yes, Sarah, I'm not sure. So you're saying, any wetland, if it, if any, if there's any wetland anywhere in the area, then that this isn't unique?
Well, they say it cannot, the circumstance must not affect generally the zoning district in which it is located.
Right.
It is important to note that the condition not affect all property in a district in order to be regarded as a condition generally affected the district as a whole.
But isn't, isn't each situation different? And, because the wetland, as Greg said, the wetland here happens to be at the front of the lot, but there's upland all at the back of the lot. Other lots, you're going to have wetland at the side.
It's a difference of location of the wetlands as opposed to the wetlands themselves.
Right.
We're, we're saying that the circumstances is that the wetland is across essentially the frontage in that there's significant buildable area behind it. As opposed to on other lots, you might have wetlands toward the back of the lot, or the whole lot might be a wetland, and you might not have buildable area. Again, we're talking in the R2 zoning district where you have half acre lots. This year, we have 25 acres in total, probably 17, 18 acres of it being upland on the other side of this wetland area. Not a small amount on a half acre lot. This is unique to that district.
Well, I guess I'm not sure that I agree on that, but it's, it's just, it's just an odd one. Because on the other hand, it's not like the property is, it's not like the property is unusable or unbuildable. It's, in fact, it's being used quite efficiently. There's a, there's an awful lot of, you know, there's an awful lot of development on the lot. So it's not like the applicant doesn't have any use of his property if we don't grant this. My, kind of my concern gnawing at the back of my head is if we, if we give, if we grant the variance, does, does that sort of lay the foundation for the planning board, for, for being able to say to the planning board, "You might control the details, but they gave us permission to put it there" off the cul-de-sac? Does that make sense to anybody, what I'm concerned about? As I looked at Frank?
So you're, you're concerned that we don't have any control about where they put it? Is that what you're saying?
I don't want control where they put... I think it's, I think, I understand, I mean, I understand the concept that they need a variance, and we're the only ones that grant the variance. But if we grant a variance, aren't we saying that it's okay to put it at a cul-de-sac? A, a common driveway at a cul-de-sac?
No, in this case.
Yeah.
In this case, because, because the alternative is to go over a wetland. And we would prefer to avoid that. That's what, that's what makes the property different.
Well, except that, there's an awful lot of room to replicate wetlands on this property. You know?
Well, I...
Because I know some of...
That's why the Conservation Commission is here. They prefer us not to do that.
Well, except that, you...
To not be done, not us, no.
Well, and, I mean, let's put it this way. And I don't mean anything by this, Mr. Costello, but, but, you know, he's not entitled to the relief generally, okay? I mean, he wants the relief, he'd like the relief, but again, you got to look at the analysis that this is, this is not making his property unusable, or, or, you know...
Well, for, you know, to, add to a single-family lots, you know, it's, they can use it for other things, but he can't get at the uplands. That's the issue that we're...
You mean, he can use it for other things other than the house?
But he can't use it for a single-family lot if he wants to break it off and use it. That's a relief.
I don't know. Neil, I know you're dying to tell us what we got.
No, no, I just...
No, I know, but you have, I know you've thought about this, I'm sure.
I'm learning as I'm listening. You know, I think, I mean, I read Bobrovsky on it, and I think the, the wetlands case that they cited had to do with an apartment building someone wanted to build. And because it was the only wetland in the locus, and because of the soil conditions, they, they couldn't get the bearing, so they allowed them to move closer to the lot line. I think you have to go to the next two prongs. And, you know, where is the substantial financial or, or other detriment to the property owner? And will, will this derogate from the intent of the bylaw? And that, that's something I think we're always concerned with. In granting a variance, will they be lined up, you know, for similar variance? And we've got lots of wetlands in Situate.
Right.
And you really have to be consistent, and I, it's vitally important to protect wetlands. But by the same token, I, I think you got to be careful that you're opening up a can of worms too. So I, I would consider that, balance that with our concern for wetlands.
Can, you know, because we generally don't deal with cul-de-sacs and things. Can you just kind of, you know, from your experience and knowledge, what's the issue with having common driveways off of cul-de-sacs?
The issue was, people were developing two 50, well, 50-foot frontage lots, two 50-foot frontage lots off cul-de-sacs and putting a common drive down the middle, which was required. And the, it was, it was voted at town meeting to stem development, frankly. That was, that was the reason behind it. It wasn't all that long ago that it was passed, but there was a proliferation of 50-foot frontage lots, many off cul-de-sacs, on, on land that was previously unbuildable. It was, it was landlocked.
So it's not a public safety issue?
No, no, it was just...
So, so it would, I mean, do you have an ultimate thought about it? That it was, it's something that should be, maybe you don't call that...
My ultimate thought, if I, I, without, and I think you always run the danger of, oh, you're taking a side. You know, the side I take is always the, I think, duty to the law that you represent.
Right, right.
And, you know, and to the judges in case law. You know, this is, you know, you guys do a fabulous job of it. But I think we have to be blind to perhaps what, you know, other interests in, in stick with, you know, what the law says. And I think the law is pretty clear on variances. If you, if you read the 3, paragraph on page 259, you know, what a variance is.
Right.
It's, it's only to be given out in very rare circumstances. And, you know, basically, you're saying, you're setting aside the legislative intent of, of the governing body in the town of Situate because of three factors. And one of the factors is it's a substantial hardship to the landowner financially or otherwise. So I think that's, it's not to the, frankly, the interest, it's not to the interest of the Conservation Commission, which is all of our interests. But I just think we got to, got to go by the law.
Right. Right. So, so, I mean, I, yeah, I'm hearing you on that. So it's, I think it doesn't, I think we get fairly easily to the, the circumstances or the soil condition. And then if you go, literal enforcement would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, and there's case law on that. And they say personal hardship does not involve, you know, personal financial hardship, lost profits, prior expenditure, resale value. So, losses caused by government action or regulation do not usually qualify as hardship. Yeah, I'm kind of stuck on that one too, unfortunately. I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with, with the variance on, on this because, because of, because of two things. My, my concern is that if it's just like, if it's, to me, it's more than saying, oh, go ask the planning board. To me, it's really, to me, if we grant this, we're saying it's okay to get a common driveway off of a...
Cul-de-sac.
A cul-de-sac, which I don't, you know...
Well, town media's always decided that you can't do that.
Yeah, and so it's sort of like, for me, that's...
There's got to be a substantial reason to vary, bear from that, to use the terminology. And so, I, I think I'm sort of with Sarah. I'm, I think it's, it's got a unique situation, so you've done the soil conditions question. You probably satisfy it. The hardship part, I still don't understand the cases after reading all of them.
Right.
But because, you know, what is a hardship? It's usually a loss of money, but they're saying here it's not, and you could use...
It's not financial.
So I see that as a close call, but the real hard issue for me is, is the last prong, which is, you know, it's a substantial detriment or derogation of the intention of, of the bylaw.
Right.
And, and so if we say, you know, you can do it in this case, then, you know, what, why is this different than every other cul-de-sac in the town?
Right.
I think that you, that's the point that you make. What is, what makes it that different from other cul-de-sacs?
Well, it also might be requested for a variance, a premise on the wetland issue. Is that, in that, wow, I've been landlocked for 1,000 years, and now all of a sudden I can, you know, get a variance from something or other. I, I just think, that's unknown. That's, that's what I would just, you know, I think we need to proceed carefully, cautiously on that ground.
Right.
Because, you know, you open the door, and there's a lot of folks who are, you know, kind of push that door open, so.
So this, this one instance where we seem to be saying to the Conservation Commission, you know, gee, we, we hear you, but we disagree in this particular instance, may actually in the long run protect where wetlands across the town.
This is my thinking, that.
Yeah.
This might be unique in the fact too that, you know, if you're trying to prevent someone from constructing off the end of a cul-de-sac, you probably don't have too many properties that have fully complying legal frontage not on the cul-de-sac. We're not trying to extend a lot off the end of a cul-de-sac out into some back piece of land. We're trying to circumvent a unique soil condition by coming off the cul-de-sac to lots that are otherwise buildable off a straight piece of a subdivision road. I think that's a unique characteristic.
Yeah, we probably have to look at all the other cul-de-sac situations in town and figure that out.
Because what it's going to do is, you're going to, you're going to have sort of like, you're going to have cul-de-sacs, and all of a sudden, if somebody's got a nice big piece of property, you're going to really have subdivisions within that cul-de-sac. It's kind of like a really bizarre little spider web.
And another, just as a, another question in the proposal, you know, if you were to fill in wetlands, are you coming in proposing, coming in with one driveway to feed both houses?
Yeah, but, but copy of the plan that I submitted to Conservation Commission. We're, we're coming in with a single common driveway, 16 feet wide, crosses the wetlands. The crossing itself is, let's get it landed.
60.
Approximately, yes, 60 feet across that level. We were asked to evaluate all alternatives and exhaust all alternatives.
But isn't, is that going across...
It's going straight across...
It looks like it's going... It looks like it's going across 31 and 32, not 30 and?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, this, all of this frontage is under, is controlled, all of those lots. This was the location, that was the shortest crossing distance. On the assessor's map.
Be 31?
That there is.
31 and 32?
32, looks like.
Let's see. That one there is 31, and it goes up to 32.
Yeah.
The other part that's tough is that he actually has access. It might not be desirable, but.
Well, they, you mean, if the Conservation Commission grants?
Yes.
The conditions, yeah.
It's sort of like the standoff. You give them access. No, you give them access. I'm not giving them access, you guys give them access. You know how?
We talked about that, so.
Have another cookie, I feel bad.
There is another shared driveway at the end of this cul-de-sack. It doesn't service the Costello property, it services the Gates property and the property next to that, already existing off the end. It was constructed prior to common driveway bylaw, so we call it a shared driveway. And again, the amount of traffic that already comes into the Costello property, again, because of the horse stable out back, you know, the intent probably of the bylaw was to prohibit traffic at the end of the cul-de-sack, make sure that there was adequate emergency access off the end of a cul-de-sack. I think those things are, they already exist here. We already have adequate access out to that horse stable for emergency apparatus. We already have the traffic at that location.
What would you do to change from a cul-de-sack to a road?
You couldn't extend this as a technical road because it exceeds the dead-end roadway length.
It is a dead end, though.
It is, it is. It's a pre-existing, it's a dead-end roadway. You wouldn't get a waiver from Planning Board to-
To make it?
To extend it even further, no.
Because that's not safe.
Correct.
Holy lordy.
You see my point?
Yeah. Right, right.
So if it's not safe, if we call it a road, it's.
Right, I mean, to me, it's not safe by what you call it.
Right.
Yeah, so there is a safety issue here as well, which probably, you know, would be one of the reasons for the bylaw.
Mr. Costello, would you like to add anything?
I think people have done fine.
Okay. You're still smiling, so that's always really nice, when you're in the face of.
The other reason they're here is the Conservation had to seek this alternative.
Yeah, you're fighting, you have lived to fight another day, but I think we're, it sounds like we're all kind of headed in the same area.
I don't think it's getting by the third, well, what's the unique? I mean, we've got all these other cul-de-sacks that are open up, possibly, as well as, I mean, the kind of law is in there for a reason.
I'm actually a little surprised we didn't hear anything from Planning Board on this, you know? But, Planning Board, so.
Maybe they weren't aware of the cookies?
Yeah, that's right. That was a surprise. Well, what is the board, Neil, do you have anything else to add?
I'm also.
Greg, do you have anything else?
Yeah, at this point, I think we'd like to withdraw the application.
Oh.
Okay.
So you don't need a final word from us for Conservation?
We've seen the discussion, and we see where it's going, and if it's to their advantage, sue it, pull it out, that's okay with us.
Okay.
All right. We'll need something in writing, just for the-
I don't need a formal denial in hand.
Okay, that's nice, so we don't have to do that.
Yeah, we need that in writing because it's, if we don't get it written, it's constructive approval, of course.
Right, right. So Annie will be on you.
Yeah, we need to be right on top of that one.
Well, sorry, we didn't have a better outcome for you.
Appreciate the deliberation. That was interesting.
Thank you very much for hearing the application.
You're welcome, and seriously, have another cookie.
Have a good one.
Dueling regulations.
Take a few home to the kids, Greg.
It's complicated.
It is complicated, and.
These regulations. Wetland protection is a little easier than this, some of this stuff.
I don't know.
Yes. The variance under zoning is very, very strict, and it's also case law on it, and.
How many have we done in the last 10 years?
I've only remembered doing one for Steve Yorkland. Two?
I think we've done-
Little Rock Island.
Two since I've been here in 21 years.
Okay, and you did one since I've been here last nine years.
Rock Island.
Little Rock Island.
Pier 44, what?
Pier 44, no. No.
Oh, it's had a variance.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Neil.
Take a couple, Greg. Kids, you know? Oh, if they don't, they're not going to make it. That would be the problem. Okay. All right, all right. Okay, we can't vote on the meetings because we're still kind of working on that.
On what?
I didn't see any of the wave. I didn't see any of the waves pass.
Yeah, that was a tough one.
Wasn't.
I always hate denying people.
Well, I mean, you can't just, although the Conservation stuff made sense, but you just couldn't.
Yeah, so. All right, well, nothing else?
Minutes? No?
No, the minutes, there's some changes on the minutes. And, that's it. Happy holidays to everybody. I do occasionally come across people in town that say, oh, I saw you on zoning, so I know we're being watched. And now you would notice that you should have come tonight because you could have had a cookie, so.
I thought those are the people having trouble sleeping.
Yeah, Bill, that may be too. Happy holidays to everybody, and thank you for coming. The meeting is adjourned. Oh, we have to vote.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.